2025 Study Session of Livonia City Council. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Honorable Councilman Scott Morgan?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Thank you, Councilman Morgan. All right, so this meeting sets the agenda for the 2020th regular meeting, which is a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, July 7th, where tonight's items will be officially voted on. We have a full council attendance today, and I'm jumping right in to audience communication for 30 minutes set aside. Take us away, Mr. Martin.
Thank you. Christopher Martin, once again the great state of Michigan. Just want to follow up a little bit on the audience communication from the previous seven o'clock meeting. When I discussed the conflict of interest on city council that Mr. Morgan and young Mr. Donavich had, that was only referring to city council. Wasn't any other school board or any other things except that? And the point I tried to make out is it's just not money. It can be a personal relationship, okay? So you're in a club, you're a member of something or whatever, and you want to have that approved because they're your friends and you had worked there at one time in your life, okay? That is against the rules, okay, as far as I'm concerned. Like I say, I'll give it to Mr. Fisher and he'll make a decision on that. Also, in our city charter, talking about the sidewalks at the senior complex over there, one of them, how they're raised in certain areas and become tripping faults for elderly people. Under our city charter, now this has been a couple of months since I breezed through it again, but in our city charter, under the section for city council, it says that your job is the health and safety of the citizens. Well, that certainly puts you in a category of having some, something to say over the sidewalks over there, not just saying, well, it's Jim Ingles, you know, he's in charge. One other thing, I was sitting on the front porch there in the rocking chair because I'm old, at 10:18 Friday, the June 13th, and I did get my Freedom of Information Act, and it was thorough. I got the names of the six members who were on the work crew, who were repairing a water main break, and they damaged a fence on my property. So I'll eventually get that resolved, okay? But once again, audience communication is great. I remember at the last meeting, Grisbeck was here and said, it's nice that people are talking. Well, sure it is. And the only reason that they can is because they're not interrupted by, oh, you're making a personal attack on somebody. You guys work for me. That's the way I look at it. Some of you work and some of you don't. And it's been like that for decades, okay? So that's all I got to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Any other comments? Seeing none? Oh, I tried. No, I'm kidding.
Yeah, you tried. Okay.
Look what we got, Mr. Martin.
All right, a couple of things. I want to talk about the audience communication for the previous meeting. While the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination against people with disabilities in housing, including group homes, it doesn't mandate that cities must allow them in every location or zone. Cities can still implement zoning regulations, but these must be applied equally and not discriminate against people with disabilities. It never ceases to amaze me how you just don't know your job. You are the landlords of Newburgh Village. You are an oversight body. You control every penny that is spent in this city. So eight years, these sidewalks. Every two years, they come back and repaint the dots. I worked on the concrete crew for DPW. In 10 days, we could replace every sidewalk in there, but yet we wait eight years. There are seniors that can't get out of their residence in the winter because the sidewalk is pitched to their house and it freezes. You have to go over there. You have to start holding people accountable in this city. The residents come and tell you about the ordinance violations. I hear this every day. I see it every day. You have to step up and start doing things. I want to address Greenfield, Greenmead. You cannot walk on that road. The aggregate hurts your feet. They said, oh, we're an old city. Even Rome, the city of Rome, knew how to build roads. And that's what you start with in any, that, the road is the first thing you put in. Why? Greenmead has just been untapped potential year after year after year. The final thing I want to talk about, the city of Taylor, the first police department in the state of Michigan that has first responder drones, where they can get to any place in the city after a 911 call in 30 seconds. It makes it safer for the officers that are responding, and it makes it safer for the citizens. And I thought about this, there's an article in the paper and you should read it, it's Brink Security, B-R-I-N-C. When I thought about Five Mile and Middlebelt, what happened with the shooting, 10 cop cars driving 100 miles down Five Mile, that's safe. I believe there was actually an accident triggered because of that response. So buildings don't fight crime. Technology and training does. And this is what we need to start doing. We need to start moving, moving forward. I know we have dogs that sniff, but you know, drones can get there a lot faster. And I'm sure there's 10 other things, but we'll see you next week.
Thank you, Mr. King. Listen, I'm not going to lie, but that was impeccable to utilize your three minutes. Any other audience communication?
Denise Micah, Lancashire wrote, I just want to remark on that when we were here for the birthday party about the drones. A friend of mine has some friends that have drones, and they talked to the police department and said, if you can't afford it, could you vet some of these people that have that technology? They would love to help the city out. So people have reached out, whether the police department or fire department take advantage of it, but I thought that was a way to get it going a little bit instead of waiting forever to get something approved. Thank you.
No, thank you. All right. Do you want to say something?
I would, if you don't mind.
Yes. Come on up. Name, address, and you've got three minutes.
Hello again, city council, and good evening. Noah Joseph Wocheck and 15351 Brookfield Street. I just want to bring to your attention, I know we've, I know the biggest talk right now is the sidewalks, but there is some lifted cement on a sidewalk on Five Mile in Farmington, actually right by the, right by the Community Choice Credit Union. The other day, I was walking my dog and I tripped over it. No harm done though, but I just thought I'd bring this to your attention, that it is a hazard, and I don't want anyone to get hurt. I don't think anyone wants to get hurt, and I just simply want to bring this to your attention. Hopefully it can get fixed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for bringing that up. We'll make sure we get a note, and we do have our engineers here. We appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Well, let me do this. Do we have any other audience communication?
Oh, sorry.
I'm going to jump to council. Councilwoman Toye, take it away.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to recognize, I know a lot of you were able to go to the, what was it, the city's birthday party out on the lawn. From what I understand, they did a fabulous job. I couldn't go because I'm having knee problems, which I probably should have had surgery a long time ago, but anyhow, so be it. But I know that, that I want to thank Sarah. She had called me and said, you can't be here, so she took crazy Henry out over there, and he had all his fireman's garb on, so the firemen did a fabulous job, the police did, everybody did. I mean, it was a team effort from what I understand, and it was, was a great party, and I hope to make it to some of the rest of them here and there when I can walk halfway decent. And I also wanted to, once again, repeat, because it's late evening to a point, but to remind people Spree starts. I know a lot of the kids know that, because I can remember they used to line up waiting for those carnival rides to open. I believe it's four o'clock on the 24th through the 29th, and as you know, it concludes with the fireworks around 10 o'clock, I think we're going to set them off. I appreciate being on the Spree Board. They're a wonderful group of people. I'm telling you, they work year round. Mark can say that, because Mark's been at the meetings and seen the board in action, and it's unbelievable what these people do through the years. So, you know, as we leave, four of us in the, in the, in December, I just want to remind the council that's here and those of you running that be kind to those people, because they really work hard, and they're really good to all of us as well. So I just wanted to give a plug out for our Spree. It's the number two, I believe, in the state, as far as attendance and recognition, if I'm not mistaken, next to the State Fair. At least we were at one time, so hopefully that's still true. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the time.
Awesome. Any other council, Councilwoman Bezinski?
Just a couple of quick things. One, about the LPD and drones, we do have drones. When I was at the Citizen Police Academy in May, it was actually, one of the topics of that evening was about our drones. So we have a couple of different kinds, heavy, heavy kind and smaller ones that can navigate through buildings. So just so folks know that we do have drones here in Livonia, and they are utilized by our public safety. And then secondarily, I just wanted to extend apologies to my colleagues for my disrupting of our vote previously. I was a little impulsive, and that is because, you know, I do hear residents when they have concerns, and wanted to swoop in and address it. But I'm going to step back and just still address it, but just figure out what the best mechanism is to help us understand more about what's happening at the Housing Commission. It is a really unique entity. My mom worked for the Housing Commission for 20 years in Livonia, so I'm very familiar with it. But, you know, how can we know more about our facilities, which obviously we do care about, and what, you know, their long-term strategic plans are, I think is important, but we'll, I'll bring that up and revisit it at a different time. So again, just wanted to say sorry for my misstep, and I'm still learning. It's a learning process here, so thank you.
Don't worry. Thanks, Councilwoman Bezinski. Anything else from council? So I must point out, the only thing I really have right now is Livonia Spree Wine Tasting that was brought up in the previous meeting, is going to be on Friday, June 27th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. If you go to livoniaspree.com, all the information for registration, you know, all the events for the Spree are phenomenal, but that is your specific. It's $35, and it helps the Rotary Club, so, and it helps both AM and noon, so it sounds like a good time. With that being said, I'm going to jump right into the study agenda with item one, is an appointment of Mark Oros to the Plymouth Road Redevelopment Authority, comes to us from the Office of the Mayor for a three-year term, which will expire May 16, 2028. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you. I'll be happy to introduce Mr. Oros, who is the mayor's appointment to the Plymouth Road Development Authority. There is an opening on that board. Mr. Oros is a member of, or a resident of the old Rosedale Gardens Association. He is a veteran, attended St. Michael's Church. He is a purchasing manager with Ford Motor Company, and we're happy that he is willing to do this assignment.
Absolutely. Thank you. Do you want to give a?
I'm here in the flesh. I did provide a CV, a resume, through the mayor's office, and I'm here at your disposal to answer any questions.
Gotcha. Counsel, direction? Councilwoman Bezinski?
Excited to have you on the PRDA. We'll have to get coffee and talk about it, but in the meantime, I'd like to put approving on consent if there's no objection.
Perfect. We have an approving on consent. Anything further from council?
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Congratulations to you, and I know that you live over in Rosedale. I back up and live practically on Plymouth Road certain days, so it's kind of fun, but I'd be happy to talk to you about some of the issues that we look at on Plymouth Road as a business and as a person that's been on that street for 48 years. So I would appreciate any help, and keep your eyes wide open, and thank you for your service, and hopefully you've got many years coming up. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So you have an approving on consent, which means you can come back to us on July 7th if you want to hang out, but your matter is all but assured to be approved, and we appreciate your service in future to the PRDA. So thank you very much for stepping up. Any comments from the audience? Seeing none. We're going to move on to item two, is a waiver use petition, comes to us from the Planning Commission in reference to petition 2025-04-02-09, submitted by Costco Wholesale Corporation requesting waiver use approval to expand the existing fuel facility and parking lot at the Costco Wholesale at 19540 Hagerty Road, located on the southeast corner of Hagerty and Eight Mile. Mr. Toramina, take it away.
Thank you. In 2012, Costco constructed their fueling facility, this is the Costco on Hagerty Road. They purchased one and a quarter acres from West Bay Exploration, and they are currently in an agreement to purchase another five acres from West Bay in order to not only expand the fueling facility, but also construct a parking lot. The property is currently vacant. It sits south and east of the warehouse and the existing fueling facility. The zoning of the property is C4 high-rise commercial. There is a detention basin located on a portion of that property that will not be impacted. In fact, it'll be expanded and used for the additional construction on this site. The proposal is to add seven pump islands. This will increase the overall capacity to 30 cars. The canopy above the fuel facility will be expanded in order to cover the new pumps. The general traffic pattern to and from the fueling facility will not change. Primary access is still with a connection with the existing drive aisle that runs east-west along the south property line. Vehicles would enter from the north and then continue south to the fuel pumps, exit back out to the main drive in a clockwise direction. There will be a fuel indicator light system that's provided on the canopy that'll let the users know when the pump is available, so that should improve traffic flow. Additional changes are being made along the front of the warehouse in the corner, right across from the fuel facility. There's going to be a number of parking spaces reconfigured. Some are going to be eliminated. Some landscaping is going to be provided. This is all work that Costco did with the Planning Commission to improve the circulation in the area around the fuel facility. And then the parking lot that's being added is primarily for employees, and that adds about 175 parking spaces. But when you include the spaces that are being eliminated in front of the store and reconfigured, the net increases roughly 140 parking spaces. So Planning Commission reviewed this and is recommending approval of the plans as submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Counsel?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I may, Mr. Toramina, when they do these additions, what I noticed is when you pull in there, and I've gotten gas air quite a few times, excuse me, when, when one leaves, you know, the pump, and then there's somebody behind you, it's real tight getting through. So if the person clears it, you know what I'm saying, in the stacking of the first one, it's hard to get through. It's not like wide enough. And I mean, I drive an SUV, but I know there's some other cars that, you know, if they pull out into that lane a little bit, you can't get by, and so it holds up traffic. I don't know if they've remedied that with this new kind of idea or not. Maybe they haven't noticed it. I don't know.
I believe the spacing between the pumps is the same as it currently is. But Larry Jurzak, who is the project engineer or architect for Costco is here, and maybe he can help answer your question.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Let me introduce myself. Larry Jurzak, I'm a Costco real estate consultant. My address is 1955 Raymond Drive in Northburg, Illinois. Thank you, Mark. Mark did a great job explaining exactly what our proposal is. But in terms of spacing, so the new pumps that we're adding, the spacing is actually increasing. So the, so the pumps that are in the queue, so actually north, I guess there's a site plan there, so on the north side, we're actually expanding it, but we're not changing the east-west direction. So those drive aisles are the same. We're actually expanding the gas station to the east as well, so we're providing three new pumps. That spacing, we have a little bit more room to expand to the east. So that drive aisle actually is going to be, but the pumps that are basically set, those eight pumps, we're not changing the spacing in the east-west direction, but we are in the north-south direction for the new pumps.
If I may, do you understand what I'm saying, though? You know, when you're backed up and then you're trying to get around to get that front spot?
Yeah, yeah. So you're saying the bypass lane?
Yeah, the bypass.
Between the two, the bypass lane is tight?
Yes, sir. It's a little tight, and, and no offense.
Yeah.
You're not losing business, don't get me wrong, because it's lined up, as you probably know.
I do know that, yeah.
In that vicinity, and, and this is very needed, incidentally. I'm not speaking against it. I'm just trying to say, I don't know, you might, I don't know if others have had that problem with the wideness of that, but I notice a lot of cars having problems with that. And then your backup, because you need more pumps, are really backed up.
Yeah.
So I'm glad to hear you're going to reconfigure that part of, what would that be, the east side of the building there?
Correct.
To accommodate some more of that overflow of parking, et cetera. Yeah, that's smart, because I remember supporting this years back when you first put it in.
Yeah, what Mark mentioned was that we are making some lane configurations just north of the gas at the corner there. We're actually pulling the drive away from the warehouse building.
Perfect, yeah.
To align with that north-south drive now.
Great.
Right now, it's kind of, it's kind of a free-for-all. You go in to see a pavement, and there's no, no direction, there's no guidance. So we're reconfiguring that. We do lose a couple of parking spaces, but the advantage is there. So we're going to go ahead with that.
Perfect. Well, thank you. Thank you for being here, too.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, sir. Thanks for being here. Are you the only representative from Costco here this evening?
I am, yes.
Okay. Thanks for your project, I appreciate it. What is your plan? There's something that our community's been dealing with, with larger big-box stores, retailers in our community, and as you talk about expanding, one of the issues we hear is the expansion of abandoned shopping carts in our community that end up in these large parking lots and then down the street, that end up in adjacent property owners' properties, and now you're talking about expanding your operation. And you may not be the best person in the world to talk about this from the Costco organization. I don't know if you have any experience with that, or maybe there is a representative from Costco that can reach out to us in the meantime before the following meeting.
Well, that's, yeah, it is an operational deal, correct? Right? So you're talking about carts that are left, for example, in our adjacent properties that are just scattered sharp?
Scattered shopping carts, yep.
Well, I do know Costco has a program, and they do train. It's extensive training that they, that employees are supposed to, that when it's their shift, they're supposed to go out and get those carts. So if it's not happening, I will talk to the warehouse manager, and we'll make it happen. We'll have a meeting. I mean, that's, I don't know if the warehouse manager was aware of it, but all our warehouse managers are very keen with, with little, small, little things like, and this is not a little thing, because you're bringing it up at a city council study meeting, so it's not little. But I will talk to the warehouse manager about this.
And I appreciate this, sir. Does the same warehouse manager serve both the Hagerty and Middlebelt location? Are they separate?
No, they're separate managers.
They are separate, okay. Well, Mr. President, I'm going to ask for an approving for the regular, not on consent, and I will, on my own time, reach out to the representative here this evening and see if we can maybe speak to those, both of those warehouse managers before the next meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, no problem. Anything else from council? So we do have an approving on the regular. Any audience communication? If you'd like to speak on it, we can make our way to either podium, and you have two minutes. Name and address.
Hey, Nicole Hefty, once again, the, I don't know, I live in Melrose. I just had a quick question. Now, a lot of municipalities, as they, this guy is more sensitive than the other one, as they continue to expand, whether it's residential or commercial, one of the issues that we are facing is flooding. I see in the schematic that the retention or detention pond that is currently on the property doesn't seem like it is going to be altered in any way. Is that correct, as you know? Okay. So I, I just want to point out, it is really important as we move forward and continue to develop that we have a plan for rainwater, for floodwaters. I mean, we were all around a couple of years ago when I bottomed out right in front of Target. I actually almost lost my car to the flooding. I was driving Chevy Sonic, so it was very small. But, but I just wanted to kind of point out that this is something that I look at when I'm looking at schematics. I want to make sure that we are making those considerations, because, you know, I'm looking at the Google map, and if you zoom out, there's a neighborhood, like what, a block away? So I want to make sure that those floodwaters aren't going into our neighborhoods. It's a big issue for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hey, it's me again, Denise Micah. I'm an avid Costco shopper, and I'd hate to tell you how many I've been through across the country, and some of the Costcos that have the longer, you know, what do you call those? Gas station tanks, right? That they have wider, and so there's no problem with, my old car, SUV was really big, and I could go around them, and they had three, I don't know if this is going to be that wide, but they happen to be that wide, so if that's a concern.
And I think on the schematic, just to kind of touch base on it, I think the existing pumps will stay, and then any of the new ones will have more of an expanded.
On the out.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. And then, just for the stormwater runoff, as you know, the, our current codes, you know, it's rigorous, you know, that's one thing that I really appreciate about the new building codes and the energy codes that were passed, is they're going to be very strict on, and that's, this is going to have to go through that process anyway, so rest assured. Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Seeing none? You have an approving on regular, we'll see you back here on July 7th.
Thank you.
Or maybe not you, but maybe someone else.
No, I will be here. I will be here.
All right. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
You, too. All right. Moving on is item three, is a site plan petition, comes to us from the Planning Commission in reference to petition 2025-03-08-02, requesting approval of all plans to expand the existing commercial building constructed, by constructing a new two-story addition at 29440 Schoolcraft Road, located at the northeast corner of Schoolcraft and Middlebelt Road. Mr. Toramina, take us away.
Thank you. This petition involves the construction of a two-story addition to an existing commercial building. This property is located just west of Bob Evans at the south, excuse me, northwest corner of Middlebelt and Schoolcraft Roads. The site consists of two parcels, have a combined area of about 30,000 square feet. The existing building on the property is vacant. It was previously occupied by a cell, cellphone store. That one-story building is about 2,100 square feet. The plan is to expand the building to the parcel, to the, on the parcel to the west with a two-story addition. That addition would, would measure roughly 28 square, 2,800 square feet on the ground floor, another 2,800 square feet on the second floor, so it'd bring the total building area to around 7,700 square feet. There is an AT&amp;T equipment building located in the northwest corner of this property that is accessed via 10-foot wide easement that runs along the west side of the property. There's parking in front of the building. There's also paved area behind the building with access to that paved area along the east side of the property. That's in very rough shape and will have to be replaced. The petitioner is showing parking both in front as well as behind the building. This would be a cabinet showroom, so it's not expected to draw a lot of traffic. They're showing a total of 14 parking spaces between the front and the rear parking lots. The dumpster will be moved to the west side of the parking lot behind the building. The building itself would be constructed out of a combination of brick, hardy plank. There's also some, some EFS material shown on the, on the building, as well as EFS and metal trim. The building has a flat roof line. The addition would be roughly 27 feet in overall height. There are lighting fixtures that would be mounted to the building to provide the illumination both to the, to the building and around the parking, the, the walkways and the parking lot areas. The Planning Commission is recommending approval of this petition. One of the provisos is, is that they provide access, emergency access to the back of the building via an agreement with the Bob Evans, the owners of the Bob Evans Restaurant property. It's my understanding that those negotiations are in the works. No formal agreement has been, has occurred at this point, but it is something that is part of the approving resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Counsel, Councilwoman Donavich.
Thanks, Mr. President. I appreciate it.[1773.15] Mr. Toramina, I was looking at the site plan, and if I understand correctly, the two-story building addition will be on the western portion, looking at the elevation you provided, and the existing building will stay as a single story, is that correct?
That is correct.
Do we know the distance between, I know you alluded to a 10-foot easement between the, the, the western property line and the building for the AT&amp;T building in the very back. Do we know how much distance is between this now two-story proposed building and the property line and those homes in the, to the west? I, I just imagine those homes to the west, they're gonna be looking at a two-story building now. I wonder if that has come up at all?
Yeah, so the distance, uh, between the building and the property line, um, if it's noted on this plan, I don't see it, it's 10 feet plus another, maybe four or five feet. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna estimate it's about 14 feet between the structure and the property line. There is an eight-foot high wooden fence that separates the residential from the non-residential properties, so there's fence along that property line. Those homes are roughly 40 feet back from the property line, so, um, probably.
Roughly 55.
Roughly 50, 55 feet between structures, the homes and the, uh, the addition that's proposed.
Was there any discussion for the replacement of the existing wooden fence? Does an ordinance call for something more?
That is not something that the Planning Commission addressed, uh, as part of its resolution, so the fence would remain, um, under the current proposal.
Okay, that's a good one.
So, so it's a showroom, just to let everyone know what the layout of this store is, and I, petitioner can describe this better, uh, but the first floor will be used primarily as a showroom for their furniture fixtures and cabinets and countertops, I'm not sure exactly. Uh, and then the upper level would be used, uh, for meeting space, offices, and I believe some additional storage.
No manufacturing necessarily?
There's no manufacturing proposed. We would, um, like the resolution to include, uh, language that would, uh, prohibit the manufacturing as well as, uh, any outside storage on the property.
And thank you, Mr. President. I just asked that question, because I imagine these residents have lived there and such close distance, I was, wasn't sure if that had come up or not at all. Thank you, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Do we have, uh, the owner here, or someone representing? If that's okay.
You can state your name and address, just for the record, and...
My name is Kareem Ariz, I am the owner of the business, it's 29440 Schoolcraft.
Okay, thank you. Um, in watching the Planning Commission meeting, I noticed that, uh, well, the south would be the front end of the building, the north would be the rear of the building, and they had talked about, that was just some plain gray cinder block, which I know, if you're driving down Schoolcraft Road, doesn't really matter, but if you're the residents...
I submit the site plan for that, we are compliant, would like to add, uh, a brick to that, to this side. Already we submitted to the, uh, to the building departments.
Okay, I was looking at my packet and it didn't look it, so it'll...
I have a copy for that.
Oh, you have, okay.
So the brick is, if I may, Mr. Chair, the brick is being added to the west side of the building. Under the original plan, that went before the Planning Commission, uh, it was either block or ephesus, and they were asked to add the brick, so the plans have been revised to include, to show brick on the side of the building facing the residence.
So the, the aesthetics are all gonna be matching now and look good? That's, that really was my concern on that, and I appreciate you coming through and doing that for us.
No problem. And about Bob Evans, for the last three weeks, we kept like connecting the corporate, and finally, in Thursday, somebody answered us, and we submit all the plan for them, and we're still waiting to give us the permission for that.
Well, thank you for coming, considering Livonia and bringing your business here, we appreciate that.
Thank you so much, thank you.
I got Councilman Toy. Yep, no problem at all.
If I may, Mr. petitioner.
Mr...
What's...
We got, we've got, we got, no, we got more questions. No, I appreciate you, we got Councilman Toy.
If I may, through the chair to the petitioner, sir, um, what, what is your background? Have you been here for a long time?
Yes, ma'am.
The city? Yeah?
For 25 years.
Oh, in that, in that location?
No, not in this location.
No, no.
No, it's a different location, but we are a construction company.
Okay, that's what I wondered. Okay, so you've got experience and everything else in this?
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
And like he said, like, it's not at all any production in this location, it's only a showroom, only.
Okay. Do you belong to the Italian American Club in Livonia?
No.
No? No, okay, I thought I recognized you. Um, okay, so what are you gonna do with those other two stories, if I may ask?
Which two sto...
Are you adding on? Is this a building he's adding on to, Mark?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. What, what were you gonna use those for?
Is, uh, uh, the second floor is only as a private offices, is only for the employee, for the designer, to, to make the design for the kitchen cabinet, because the showroom is a kitchen cabinet, it's not furniture.
Right, and then the third floor is?
It's not the third floor, it's only first and second.
Oh, that's it?
That's it.
Oh, okay. I thought, I misunderstood. And have you talked to the neighbors at all that, about you or behind you, at all? Have you talked to any of the neighbors to let them know what you're doing?
To be honest with you, no, we didn't.
No, okay. Have you heard from anybody?
No.
No? Okay, all right, I just, I just wondered, just asking. Okay, well, thank you for what you're doing, appreciate it very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, sir, for being here this evening, I appreciate it. I know there's been some discussion about the two-story addition that abuts the residential. How tall will that two-story building be?
Um, if I'm not wrong, like, uh, the first floor is gonna be like, uh, 14, 14 feet high, the second floor is gonna be almost like 12, total is gonna be 27, I think so.
27 feet tall?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Toramina, what is, what are those ranch homes in the back, maybe 15, 20 feet tall? At the peak, I mean...
16 at the most, probably.
Yeah, yeah. Are there any windows on the western portion of the building facing to those residential backyards?
No.
Just in the front? Okay.
There are... I, I believe there are, so the, th- this is the west elevation.
So there are windows?
Uh, this doesn't show that the brick, unfortunately, I don't have the plan showing it, but this will all be brick now, but there are, you can see the series of windows shown both on the first floor and the second level.
And then, uh, I know there's been some discussion about your type of operation and, and what have you. Are you gonna have vehicles parked overnight, large box trucks coming in and out?
No, sir. No, sir. There's no storage area in the showroom.
I just have concerns, Mr. Toramina, to council, about the two-story addition abutting the residential.
No.
But there are no residents here that I know of, uh, right now, so I guess I'll defer to the rest of the council for now, but, um, was there any discussion, uh, sir, about that, uh, wooden fence, that existing wooden fence that drove by, looks pretty rough? Any discussion with the neighbors about replacement of that wooden fence?
To be honest with you, it's very well-maintained from the, from the side of the neighbors, the fence. You're talking about the fence, right? It's very well-maintained.
Yeah. Mr. Toramina, is our ordinance call for, and I don't necess, I'm not necessarily a fan of masonry fences, I think they look kind of bad for residents. Was there any discussion that you mentioned earlier about, about fencing? There's nothing in the ordinance stipulates SBA vinyl fence of some sort?
No, this is, again, the, uh, the discretion of, of the Planning Commission and the council in terms of the separation requirements.
Okay.
So if council believes, or feels that, uh, the fence in combination with landscaping would be sufficient to separate, um, the properties, then you can approve that if you feel that it should be replaced with a masonry wall, then you can also require that. The benefit of this fence is that it's eight feet tall, so it's got the extra height that you wouldn't normally get with a masonry wall unless you required it.
Sure.
But, um, uh, but certainly, uh, the, the masonry wall is, is, has been the standard in terms of separation between residential and non-residential.
Sure, and I'm not necessarily advocating for masonry fence, I just think that they're unsightly for, for those neighbors and what they look at. This is grass or lawn between your building and the property line, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Maybe, uh, council's purview is to add some sort of tall vegetation, whether it be some sort of specific landscaping tree that is of a certain height to, to block the, the sightline for those homeowners. I mean, they're so close, and I imagine they're gonna wanna maybe add some sort of illumination to the side of the building. I'm just trying to think of those neighbors back there. If it was a larger gap, 100 feet or whatnot, you know, that's a different story, but with it being so close to those neighbors, I think we'd be prudent to add at least some sort of tall vegetation. Otherwise, we'll not approve a two-story building, and the petitioner's not gonna get a two-story building, but maybe compromise would be adding some large vegetation that is of a certain height and species. That's just my two cents, council. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Morgan.
Good one.
Yeah, after looking at these plans, uh, again, um, it seems that, uh, these windows, uh, they're just gonna be peering into the neighbor's yard, um, right over the fence. It doesn't, uh, this doesn't seem very conducive with that specific area. Um, was there any other plans thought of? I mean, you're abutting right up to a neighbor's property, you're gonna have a second-story window, and you're gonna be looking over into the property.
If you don't mind, I can cancel those windows.
You can what?
I can cancel those windows.
Can't cancel?
Yeah. You, you can remove them, you're saying?
Yeah, I can remove them, there's no problem with us.
On the second story?
And the second story.
Yes, understood. Okay, that, uh, that would probably be a little bit better, I think, um, I think that would be, uh, something that I could, uh, I could live with, if those second-story windows were removed.
There's no problem.
Is that, uh, Mr. Toramina, is that, uh, would that be in violation of any of our city ordinances or anything like that?
I'm not aware, we'll have to check with the inspection department, I'm not aware, uh, on a building this size whether, if that would be...
Just so they're not peering into the neighbor's backyard, I can't imagine that'd be, I, I mean, I just try to put myself in that position, how I would feel if someone just, uh, built a building there and then...
Yeah, the other question we had was whether the, the second story could be added to the existing building and then the addition be a, a single, uh, level. I don't know what the limitations are with doing that and the, and the costs, but that's probably a question worth asking the petitioner to see if that's a possibility.
Well, that would, yeah, that would be up to the petitioner, if, if he'd be willing to, um, uh, take a look at that, because I would, I would be okay with, uh, the no windows on the west side if you were having the, um, the second story there, but if you decided to put the, uh, second story on the east side, then that would be, I think that would be fine.
To be honest with you, if I'm gonna move it to the, the east side, it's gonna cost me way more than right now. I can remove, it's way cheaper for me to remove the windows than to move all the second floor to the other side.
Okay. Fair enough. Removing the windows, I'd be in favor of that.
Perfect. Do you wanna put a motion out there, or?
Yep, a motion to, uh, approve that if, um, uh, those windows are removed on the second floor.
With that stipulation. That sounds good. Uh, so we do have a...
Uh, and that not facing the front. You can have windows on the front, just...
No, just on the side.
Windows on the west side, that's correct.
Yeah, just on the west side.
I just wanted to clarify.
So, or do you want that on consent, or the regular?
Uh, on regular, yeah.
So, okay, so we've got a regular. I got Councilwoman Bedzinski.
Yeah, um, so I mean, I just, my concern is whether the neighbors are aware, um, you know, they might, I don't know if there was a, um, a notice put up, um, if there wasn't, so I mean that...
No notice is required on this property.
I, I would feel more comfortable if you could reach out to those neighbors and, and see how they feel. I mean, I, a wood fence in great condition is lovely, but it does kind of age with time, and if, if the residents are interested in a vinyl, I, I, I feel like making sure that there is an appropriate barrier, since it's been a vacant space, and it's gonna be larger than their current homes.
Yes, but you know, the vinyl is, is no way, like, it's eight foot long now. The vinyl is, it doesn't give me eight foot long. Now, we, we have more privacy between the residential and the commercial.
If you wanted to reach out to the residents.
And plus, like, since I bought this property, I am very well-maintained, those fences.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Donovan.
I'll go first, go ahead. Oh, you got it. Yes.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, my issue was also with the windows, so I'm glad that Mr. Morgan brought that up. What are, what are your hours of operation gonna be on this business?
The operation?
Yeah, like, what, what time are you...
The production or the operation of the business?
Well, when, when will you have workers there? Is it 24/7? Is it 9 to 5?
No, usually it's gonna be from 9 to 6.
9 to 6, okay. So there wouldn't be lights shining out of the back windows?
No, no, no.
We're gonna take them off the second story anyway, but we don't want anything shining into the residence. Okay, that was my question, thank you.
Uh, Councilman Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Toramina, when you were doing your presentation, you referenced a few concerns that you had that you'd like to see maybe addressed in the resolution. What were those, again? Something about limiting the future businesses, I think there was a few things that you highlighted that were important to the...
Who's the access, uh, the emergency access coming from the east, uh, from the Bob Evans property?
Okay.
That's something that the Planning Commission, uh, included in its resolution.
So that is included in the approving resolution?
Uh, it, it is, that's correct.
Okay, was there anything else that...
Uh... No, everything else is pretty much standard. Uh, I don't, nothing is jumping out at me besides that cross-access easement.
Okay.
Um, the rest of the conditions are, uh, the ones that you'd normally see. And then the, uh, material, the brick material on the west side of the, of the building, and that's already been addressed by the petitioner.
So, Mr. President, to the maker of the motion, Mr. Morgan, would you be amenable to adding, uh, a species of trees to be added to the western portion that are, that are tall enough to buffer the building, and that would be handled administratively with the planning engineer department of a certain species that's tall enough?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Okay, and then would you be okay with the replacement of the existing wooden fence along their property line to be replaced with a white vinyl fence?
If the petitioner is amenable to that, that's up to him, though.
I mean, I believe it's under our purview that we can require that and, uh, and ask for that, but I'm not gonna circumvent your motion if that's not something you don't push. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. So we do have an approving on regular with those conditions that we have noted, correct?
That was with the addition of trees.
Correct, yep. Um, is that something that you can live with?
Uh, to be honest with you, about the fence, it's too much, the...
No, no, it was more of, um, the landscaping upgrades.
The landscaping, my, my point is for, for which reason I have to add more, like, trees there. If, already I'm canceling the windows as a second floor, meaning I'm making more private, like, to the residential area, why I have to add more trees?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, I'm not gonna get into back and forth with you, sir. This is something that's important to our residents, as me as one council member. I guess we'll see at the next meeting if council wants to vote yes or against us, but it's probably my recommendation to not challenge us on the fact of adding trees to buffer our residence. I think it's a very low-cost thing for you to add for the betterment of the site plan and the betterment of residents that are budding. They've looked at open space for the last 30, 40, 50 years, and now they're gonna be looking at a two-story, 27-tall, cinder block building with brick now. So I think in, uh, it's best for you to accept the trees and say thank you and let's move on. Thank you.
Thank you. So we do have an approving on the regular. With the stipulations right now, I would plan on tending on July 7th.
Okay.
It'll be on the regular starting at 7, and with those conditions, that will be voted on.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Anything from the audience? All right. Moving on to item four is a site plan petition comes to us again from the Planning Commission in reference to petition 2025-03-08-05 submitted by Cityscape Architects on behalf of Comerica Bank, requesting a site plan approval to renovate the building and reconfigure the parking lot at 17111 Laurel Park Drive North. Mr. Tormina.
Thank you. The original bank was built in 1979. This was a manufacturing, uh, manufacturer's bank, and then it was expanded again in the mid-1980s. Under this petition, the building structure would remain the same. It wouldn't change. The only changes to the building would be to the facade. The parking lot is going to undergo significant reconfiguration as well as a few other site features. This property, as you can see from this aerial photograph, has two driveways from north Laurel Park Drive, a south driveway and a north driveway. The south driveway is going to be removed, and then, take note of the, of the aerial here, this parking lot along the north side of the property, that is going to be eliminated. The drive circula, the circulation around the site will still remain the same, but a significant amount of parking will be removed. That driveway, the south driveway will be removed. This parking gets reconfigured. Right now, it's one-way aisles and angled parking. It's all gonna be two-way aisles and 90-degree parking. We still have access to the drive-up facilities at the rear of the property. Stormwater management will occur at the north end of the property where there is currently parking. The site will get completely re-landscaped, and then for the exterior features, the building has a completely different appearance. It doesn't, doesn't change in terms of its structure, as I indicated, but you can see the color and the material changes included along the, the front of the building will be a composite, a fiber cement composite material. The brick will be either replaced or stained in some areas to a dark gray color. There's other light gray features. The ACM panels or the composite metal panels will be placed above the entrance way you can see the, the blue highlighting the entrance. The same blue will be used to highlight the, the drive-up facilities at the rear of the property. So this illustrates the changes to the facade with all of the new materials, with the left-hand side showing you what the building looks like currently. The Planning Commission is recommending approval.
Thank you, Mr. Tormina, counsel. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Bedzinski.
Yeah, I mean, this looks like a investment in property to improve it, modernize it. I think that's great. You know, there's other developments that are happening there. We got two new restaurants coming to that same area, so I just think it further enhances space. It, it's not really a change to what we currently have, so I'd like to put approving on consent if there's no objection.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have anything further? Audience? We have an approving on consent. Uh, number five is an award of contract. This comes to us from the Department of Finance for a three-year agreement to replace our current credit card program and transaction to a procurement cards program. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Deborah Lichtenberg, Director of Finance. What I'm bringing to you this evening is a request to move away from our traditional city credit cards that are for the use of staff members to a purchasing card program. The cards work in the same way for the user. However, the P-card program offers us some additional controls. There's an online portal that can be used. It gives us real-time transaction, uh, tracking. We have easier reconciliation of those expenses that are being incurred, and they offer a rebate program. So for every purchase that is made, we do receive a percent back in, in cash rebates. Our existing credit cards are an antiquated program, does not provide us with any rebates, and is much more difficult to track. So this is an improvement, not only in the rebate that would be allowed to come back to the city, but in the controls that it offers. This would not be, anything that would be outside of the purchasing or procurement policy. Everything that is purchased with an electronic payment is still subject to those procurement rules, and so it is just an updated process for us.
Thank you. Uh, Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I was reading up on this. I really like the safeties that are put on, in place on the spending limits, the fact that we receive, the tracking, the fact that we receive a rebate. I mean, that's basically free money for stuff we're gonna buy anyway, so to me, this seems like a no-brainer. I would like to offer an approving on consent if there are no objections.
Yes. So we have an approving on consent. Uh, Councilwoman Sheil.
So I have a question regarding the cash rebate. Where does that go?
That comes back into the general fund.
Okay, so it'll go to the general fund, not in each department's fund?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Is that rate pretty much, is it as good as we have right now or is it even better on the rebate back?
So, right now, we don't get a rebate?
I thought we did.
No.
No, we have, like, Diners Club right now.
No.
So this is better.
No, we have, we have a bare, a very, very bare-bones, um, credit card program right now. It offers no, no rewards or benefits.
In all seriousness, when I was treasurer, we did, and that was a few years ago, like, 20, but, um, we, we had, we were getting some interest. I remember when Curtsey was here.
That, that's on our bank accounts, our regular checking accounts, savings accounts.
Well, let's get it wherever we can get it. Okay, thank you.
I, I, so we do have an approving on consent, but I can tell you that, you know, we rolled this out when we were working together in Novi, and the one question I do have for you, and I, and I, you don't have to answer it, I mean, you can if you want, but what's the limits gonna be?
So the limits will be set.
Based on the procurement?
Depending on the need.
Yeah, 'cause.
Um, but there will be controls put in place that no single transaction can exceed those procurement limits. It's not a way to skirt it.
No, no.
It's, um, you know, in this day and age, a lot of our purchases are made online. You can't make online purchases with a check. You have to be able to have an electronic, um, process.
It is, so, I'm, this is a huge process, because, giving you guys perspective, and I won't belabor this, but, you know, as a facilities guy, everybody goes to Granger, and you pay 40% higher because you can get something quick, but you can't leverage extra procurement. So in theory, celebrate the fact that this is gonna give us better savings for the city. This, this is a win, so I'm happy you're doing it, so.
I always thought we did.
Thanks, Mr. President. Thanks, Mrs. Lichtenberg, for being here. So this will still have to follow the traditional spending limits that council has set for expenditure. So, you know, for example, the city engineer can't go buy a new engineering thing for $30,000 without coming before council.
No.
Those engineers, you always have to double-check.
Mr. Lear did say that he wanted something for 30 grand.
We do watch them very closely.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, so we have an approving on consent. Is there any questions, uh, from the audience on this?
That's good.
Name and address, you got two minutes.
I just have a question on that. What kind of fees are involved in that? Are the rebates covering the fees? Are you breaking even? Are you paying more in fees than what you pay now?
It's, I, I could say that, if you, do you want to take that, or, so basically, like.
I mean, I'm just curious.
No, 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 so the fees, it's just, it's a different way for us to, to buy things.
No, I know, but the company that you're, that is processing those credit card.
Oh, for sure.
Are they charging, I mean, like, American Express charges a fee every year.
If you can answer it, great. If not, we can get back.
Is there fees involved, that there weren't fees in the other one?
Um, through the chair.
Yes.
Um, there are fees attached to every credit card, but those fees are incurred on the merchant's side. On the user's side, there's, you know, an annual fee, which is the same as any other credit card, but because this leverages certain, um, networks, we're able to get those rebates back. It's, it's a program that has worked very successfully for governmental units and, and businesses of, of many sizes. It's, it's simply, um, it's to the benefit of the, of the bank that offers it, because they, it's a spend. We want to spend more with it because we get rebates back. They make money off of the spend. It's a win-win.
Awesome. Thank you. Cool. Thank you. All right, so we have an approving on consent. Anything else from the audience? Seeing none. We're gonna move on to item six. Is a request for authorization to purchase two 2025 Ford Rangers utilizing the state of Michigan and Macomb County Consortium bid process comes to us from the inspection department to replace current outdated vehicles from budgeted funds. Mr. Hannah, how are you?
Good. Good evening, counsel. Uh, so I've, I've got two items on. The next item will also be vehicles, the different, just different types of vehicles, but I am replacing or looking to replace six 2015 Ford Escapes. I'd like two of those to be the Ford Ranger. We have those currently, and we are using those in our ordinance department, so this will round out that fleet of the ordinance department with Rangers.
Cool. Counsel?
Approving.
Well, I've got, uh, Councilman Morgan.
Yep, approving on consent.
We have an approving on consent. Is there anything else from council?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'll just note, thanks, Mr. Hannah, for being here, that their department uses these trucks in, in a good wa, good way, right? They're, they're pulling signs out, they're picking stuff out in the roadways, they're doing a lot of stuff where they need a truck as opposed to an SUV, so the Rangers make a lot of sense. And the following item, that, that side of their inspection department use those SUVs different than they do the ordinance enforcement, so I think it makes sense. Thank you, sir.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Anything else? Anything from the audience? All right, Mr. Hannah, we'll jump on to item six is a request for authorization to purchase, or, number seven, request for authorization to purchase four 2025 Ford Escapes utilizing state of Michigan and Macomb County Consortium bid pricing. Mr. Hannah, still same stuff, just different vehicles.
Yeah, yeah, same thing, just replacing 10-year-old vehicles.
Wonderful. Counsel?
Mr. Chair? Ms. Toy got it.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
You want an approving on consent?
Please, go ahead.
We have an approving on consent. Is there any other questions from council? Audience? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Item eight is a request for approval of an agreement for conservation easement comes to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation in reference to an eagle conservant, uh, was it conservation easement along the branch of Bell Creek within the Fox Creek Golf Course. Mr. Davis, Director of Parks and Recreation, it's great to see you.
It's great to be seen. Thank you, Council President. Ted Davis representing Parks and Recreation. I actually have the subject matter expert here with me, Doug Ware from our golf course. He's the superintendent of Fox Creek, is gonna be taking us through this project.
Expert might be a strong word. Doug Ware, Golf Course Superintendent for the City of Longoria. Thanks for having me here. Uh, so what this is, is a company called North Point Development has come to us, has decided that we have a good area for them to do some stream mitigation work throughout the, the, like, it would be from the east, uh, border going on to the golf course behind the, the big sled hill. They've got grant money that they, and points that they need to use, and we, we came up on their maps as a good place to do it. We've done these projects at Idewell and Whispering Falls in the past. They're gonna do a lot of, uh, stream work to help with a lot of our erosion problems. It's gonna help with our flooding.
Good.
They're gonna remove some culverts that, that create backups. We're, uh, we're gonna get a, probably at least one new bridge of, out of it, and it's gonna improve that 9, 10, 18 area quite a bit. I'm, I'm very much looking forward to it.
Yeah, the packet was great. Um, yes.
I wondered, who's getting all those golf balls when they?
That's what I, I got the Pro V1s.
Come on out.
Come on out. Are you gay, son?
I am, yes.
Well, you got a great mom.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, so, counsel, do we need a motion?
So moved.
Consent?
Sure.
All right. So we got an approving on consent. Anything from the audience? Anything else from council? Appreciate it. This is a great project.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number nine is a request to approve a notice of intent resolution to issue general obligation bonds not to exceed $5 million from the Parks and Recreation in reference to the acquisition, construction, furnishing, and equipping improvements at Sheldon Park. Mr. Lear, is this you? Oh, I'm sorry. Listen, I, I'm not a Red Bull. Apologize.
Deborah Lichtenberg, Director of Finance. Um, this evening, we are bringing to you a request to approve a notice of intent resolution that would simply be publishing a notice of 45-day referendum for bonds not to exceed $5 million for improvements to Sheldon Park. So the city, in partnership with the Plymouth Road Development Authority, has already begun the process of looking at improvements for Sheldon Park. The PRDA has approved a contract not to exceed $350,500 with DLZ for architectural and engineering design services. Um, the, the new plans would include a new splash pad, playground, sports field, and facilities, walking pass, and a pavilion. Um, the money from the design services would, under the wording included in the notice of not, not to, the notice of intent, would allow for those fees to be refunded from bond proceeds. The issuance would be, again, not to exceed $5 million. We are looking for the funding to support the bonds to come 45% from the PRDA, with the remainder coming from the city. Um, the city does have an existing bond that is dropping off that will free up the dollars that will be needed for the ongoing debt service related to the city's portion. Um, we should also note that the council has already voted to accept a donation of $100,000 from Bill Brown Ford related to this project, and in the future, we will be bringing to you, um, an agreement between the PRDA and the city, just memorialize the agreement on the cost sharing. So again, this is the first step in, um, future issuance of bond, and, um, we will need to bring back to council at a later time the actual request to issue bonds in the future.
All right, thank you. Counsel? Uh, Councilwoman Bedzinski.
Um, could, could you just, um, remind us, what is the bond that is dropping off?
Um, that is related to the 2015 refunding bonds on the, uh, it's a Parks and Recreation bond.
Um, I mean, generally speaking, I, I think that this is a great investment. Um, you know, it, it's a win for a park. I know it's been long in planning. Ted's worked very hard to get all of these pieces to line up now, so I will, um, put an approving on regular just because of the nature of it, if there's no objections to my colleagues.
Thank you. So we have an approving on regular. Councilwoman Toy?
Thank you.
And then Councilwoman Donovan.
Mr. Davis is behind you, Deb. If I could just, real quick, shoot a, hey, Mr. Davis, I've had a couple calls, more than a couple calls about, um, the pool down there not being open again this summer. I guess it was closed last summer.
No, it was open last summer.
Is that because of this particular?
That is because of this. We would need to spend, um, the whole shell needs to be reimbursed, I think, which is about $125,000 to $150,000. We thought it was honestly wasteful to spend that money for this year, knowing that we have this in the works, and we were assuming that this is gonna be approved, and we're gonna have a completely redesigned park for 2026, so.
And we'll have a pool there, right?
We will not have a pool in this plan. This will be a splash pad, accessible playground, fitness area, walking pass, uh, one large pavilion with restrooms and changing stations. Then you'll have smaller 20 by 20 pavilions in multiple spots throughout the site, eight pickleball courts, four tennis courts, two baseball fields, one pony field, one 60/90 diamond fenced, um, native plantings around.
A pony field?
It's like a.
What is it?
50/80 diamond or probably 45, 75 diamond.
Oh, I see, okay. So the only real pool down there, if I'm not mistaken, will be Clemens?
Clemens Circle, which is our newest pool still.
And we did a lot of work in that pool, if I recall.
That was a complete redesign overhaul. That pool opened in 16.
Yeah, okay. Okay, all right. I just wanted to get an answer. I was gonna call you, and I just ran out of time. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you. Councilwoman Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Davis and Mrs. Lichtenberg for being here. I also want to thank Miller Canfield, who's in the back there, our bond counsel. Uh, Ms. Lichtenberg, you mentioned a portion of the bond would be covered by city tax dollars. What figure is that? I know it's kinda hard maybe to answer that right now, because we don't know what the rates will be, but general figure of what that would, what our side would be on a yearly basis?
Approximately $175,000.
Approximately $175,000 would come out of general fund or Parks and Rec or?
It comes out of the general fund. No, I'm sorry. It is 208.
So the 208?
Yes, the, the Parks and Rec fund.
So then what would that, what would that principal and interest payment be a year total between the PRDA and Parks and Rec approximately? Is that $400,000 a year?
It's about 300 and, um, three, a little less than 350.
All right, roughly $350,000 a year in annual payments for 25 years?
Yes.
And, um, you mentioned the cost that we've incurred so far would be able to be reimbursed, so would the design, architectural, whatnot from DLZ be able to be reimbursed?
Yes.
Okay. And that bond has fallen off from Parks and Rec, so that would be able to cover the portion, so we essentially be net neutral, we wouldn't put any, I don't want a tough spot?
Exactly. Correct.
Those are my questions for now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, you good? Um, I do have one question, if I may. Um, in this plan, is there any plans on the record to sell any of this Sheldon Park land to, for any private reason? I just wanted to just throw it on record, 'cause there's been rumors out there, and I'd rather have, to be talked about here.
You wanna?
Yeah. You, you can see the plan, Council President. It is, we are very specific, and it deals with Sheldon Park proper, right?
Perfect.
So obviously, we know there are other municipal properties that border this on the north and on the west. It, this plan doesn't deal with those. So the Sheldon Park itself, we are accounting for every acre of that site and will not sell anything.
Sounds good. Appreciate it. Any other comments from council? Anything from the audience?
Is this on the regular, by the way?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Good evening. Name and address, you got two minutes.
Laura Janica, Munger Street. Um, this is, was a big shock to me. I didn't see any of this coming. I, I don't, $5 million, that's a boatload of money. Um, I, I haven't even seen that this, this plan has been brought to the people. I mean, I know you showed it to a few. I, I haven't even seen that this, this plan has been brought to the people. I mean, I know he showed it to a few people. Has it really passed the mustard? And I, I have a copy of the WT report, which is, uh, has to deal with Americans with Disabilities Act. I don't know if this has passed that smell test. I don't know if this has really been vetted completely, and now we're throwing money at it. I think we really need to look at this. And we also need to look at, at Noble. I don't know how we can build this park without considering Noble. Um, pre- preeminent architect, uh, Martin Schwartz said it, it should be together. The library should go with the park. It should, it should stay together. And the people do want a pool. Um, I think a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is not that much to, compared to five million, to fix the pool. And have ours that, that, that really work. Um, and I'm also kinda concerned about the timing of all this, you know? This millage just keeps kinda getting out there. We keep, seems like things are being dangled in front of our face in a hurry, so that we'll pass this millage, and, and people are seeing through this. So, I hope we, we open it up to the people, and, um, I'm gonna drop off some of these WT reports in, in the mailbox tomorrow for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Uh, Mr. President, uh, Mr. Davis, I have a question. When did you start the planning for this process?
Ten years ago.
So it's been a long time. This is nothing that just started within the last few months?
This has been, we've wanted to redesign Sheldon Park for a long time. This has been in our capital plan to actually hire landscape architects and do a de-formal design since twenty twenty. Um, so that, I'm, it's taken a lot longer than I would have liked for us to get to this point. I'm happy we are finally here, and I'm thankful, honestly, for PRDA and their support. Without their support, we would still be at the drawing board trying to figure out how to pay for this. So I'm incredibly thankful for their support. We've seen other communities do similar projects like this. Uh, Westland being, you know, our neighbor to the south, they've made great use of their DDA in developing parks. Uh, and the comment of five million so much, most communities, five million, it would be why so little? So I'm thankful again that we have this opportunity before us, and I think people are gonna be very happy with the end product we provide them.
I'm happy you mentioned that, Mr. Davis, because we'd be remiss to not mention the hard work PRDA has done. It's very unique that PRDA abuts this park. Most of the parks don't have this, uh, really great opportunity to take advantage of, but the PRDA, with the dollars that they bring in, are able to bond for this, these dollars for twenty-five years. You can't do this at other parks necessarily.
No.
No, and I think it's a really great, uh, working relationship between your department and finance and the PRDA to pull this off. I remember when myself and Councilwoman Bzinski attended your town hall, that, uh, showed us the Sheldon Park months and months ago, and it was pretty impressive, and at that time, you were working on the plans, but you weren't sure if it was gonna happen, and I think it's really pretty awesome that PRDA worked on this and with Miller Canfield and their hard work and their bond account, bond attorneys to, to pull this off, and this would be a great benefit for Southeast Livonia. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other questions from counsel? So we have an approving on the regular? Anything from the audience? Seeing none, we're moving on. Item ten is a request for authorization to purchase four two thousand twenty-five Ford one fifty super cab XL forty-five, four, or four by four, six and a half foot bed pickup trucks utilizing the state of Michigan and Macomb County Consortium bid pricing, comes to us from the Public Service Division to replace outdated vehicles. Mr. Roraf, how are you?
Good evening, counsel. Don Roraf, DBW Director. Uh, I did my best to have Mr. Hannah present this tonight with his vehicles, but he wouldn't, uh, honor my request, so I'm here for you. Uh, as you mentioned, we are here looking to replace, um, four of the F-50s. Um, all of these vehicles are gonna be bought through the state contract pricing, as you mentioned, with the upfitting happening through Truck and Trailer Specialties, who we use for a lot of our equipment. These trucks, these particular trucks will be assigned to the supervisors. All of those trucks, um, will be pushed down into the fleet, and the other vehicles that they'll, they'll be pushed down to will be auctioned off through the, um, mitten process. Um, so we are looking to replace these F-one-fifties, and we're looking for counsel to include this with a total cost of two hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars from budgeted funds.
Counsel?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I'd like to offer an approving. And that's it?
All right. Is that on the regular or consent?
I'm gonna go with consent.
Sure, let's move it on consent. What the, yeah. Is that okay, Mr. Roraf?
Fine with me.
Okay.
I'm just trying to stay awake.
All right, so we got an approving on consent. Is there any questions from the audience? Anything else from counsel? All right, moving on. Item eleven is a request for authorization to purchase three two thousand twenty-five Ford F-two-fifty super cab XL four by four, eight foot bed pickup trucks utilizing the state of Michigan and Macomb County Consortium pricing. Mr. Roraf, take it away.
Again, this will sound very familiar.
Yes.
These are through the approved twenty twenty-five capital budget, uh, for the purchase of these three F-two-fifties. These vehicles will be used in our Parks Department, uh, replacing vehicles that are, costs are starting to outweigh the, uh, the value of the equipment themselves. So again, we're looking for a total purchase price for these three pickup trucks, including the vehicle and the upfitting, is two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Thank you. Counsel? Councilman Morgan?
Yeah, I'd like to offer an approving on consent.
We have an approving on consent. Any questions, concerns from counsel? Anything from the audience? All right, moving on. Item twelve is a request for authorization to purchase one two thousand twenty-five Ford Transit van, two fifty rear-wheel drive, high-roof cargo van utilizing the state of Michigan and Macomb County Consortium bid pricing. Same stuff?
Same stuff. This is a van that's gonna be used in our building maintenance department. Um, this will be outfitted with, um, shelving, security doors, ladder racks, special lighting, equipment, power inverters, all of the things that the building mechanics would use. Again, this is, um, approved through the twenty twenty-five capital outlay budget, and we're asking counsel to approve the purchase for a total of sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars from budgeted funds.
Thank you. Counsel?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Um, I'd be happy to offer an approving on consent unless Mr. Roraf would like to come back on the seventh. I can put that right there.
Would you like to hang out?
Would it be the seventh or the eighth? I'm not sure how long we were, you know, I'm kidding. Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
On consent.
All right, so we have an approving on consent. Anything else from counsel? Anything from the audience? All right.
Have a good night.
You too. Thank you. Item thirteen is a proposed amendment to Livonia Court of Ordinances as amended, comes to us from the Department of Law to amend section one hundred of Title Nine, Chapter fifty-six, malicious mischief, mischief? Man, I don't know. I might have to recuse myself from this one, to modernize the language used in the malicious use of a telephone ordinance. Take it, oh, hi.
I'd like to introduce to City Council our prosecutor, Sidney Rogers. She's been doing a great job for us since she came with us, what was it, in January?
January, almost six months now.
Um, and, and she has been, in the course of her responsibilities, identifying, uh, ways to improve our existing criminal ordinances, to improve enforcement, and, uh, I will invite, uh, Ms. Rogers to present.
And there's one thing with the introduction, is you have to work with Judge Jolly and Mr. Burnier, so listen, you're.
We're very sorry.
Yes.
You're blessed.
They keep me busy. I'm on Judge Jolly's docket this week. I'll tell him everyone says hello.
Tell, tell him City Council says hi.
Hi, will do. Um, thank you, everyone, for having me tonight. I'm Sidney Rogers. I'm the newest member of the Law Department. Um, I have three ordinances for you today. I will start with, uh, malicious use of the phone is the first one, which would be ordinance number nine point fifty-six point one hundred. It's an ordinance that already exists, uh, exists. Um, it's an older ordinance. It's really targeted at using the actual phone and making phone calls, um, back and forth, not even voicemails. It's really targeted at prank calls. Um, that is just not how we use phones anymore. Most of the communication is through text messages. I mean, I would tell you, I talk to my mom every day, and half of it's all through text messages. Um, so the language that we've added is to really modernize it and target how phones and telecommunication devices are currently used.
Awesome, thank you, yes. Councilwoman Donovan, Councilwoman Toye?
Mrs. Rogers for being here this evening. So does that mean these people that keep on calling me every single day, I can report them, and you'll come arrest them?
Well, if they're threatening you, absolutely.
Yes, I get these random phone calls all day long, and I feel like every time I answer them, it gets worse.
I'm, I'm not calling him. It's not me.
Uh, Mr. President, this seems like a standard thing that the Law Department has recommended. I read through it. Everything seemed pretty, uh, boilerplate. I'd like to offer an approving on consent. There's no objection from my colleagues.
All right, so we have an approving on consent. Um, any questions, concerns, counsel, before we move on? Audience? All right, let's see what else we're doing with process change. I love it. Fourteen is a process, uh, proposed amendment to Livonia Court of Ordinances as amended, comes to us again from the Department of Law to amend chapter eighty-eight of Title Nine, the sale of tobacco products to persons under, uh, age twenty-one to mirror the penalties of the state statute and tailor the language of an ordinance prohibit the use of a nicotine vape in school buildings. Wonderful.
Yes, this is once again another ordinance that's already on the books, but we're amending it to reflect the current penalties of the state law. Um, the state law has made an escalating punishment in ordinance, that our current ordinance makes the first offense a misdemeanor. The new ordinance, and what state law is currently doing, makes the first two offenses a civil infraction, and then it ramps up to a misdemeanor and the third offense. And that's appropriate, because that's what state law is, so we need to mirror it. But also, with the first two offenses, typically, we're seeing right now, we have an ordinance similar to this for marijuana vapes. This is really targeted at nicotine. Uh, for the marijuana vapes, the city prosecutor's office, my office, cannot handle any misdemeanors for someone under eighteen. Um, here, if it's issued as a civil infraction, it can be handled by the Law Department at Sixteenth District Court instead of going downtown. Um, it's a good change, and also it gives young people that are dabbling in nicotine vapes here, their first offense is not a misdemeanor. It's not something that will stick with their record. And, uh, most importantly, this will mirror, um, state law that we currently have.
Thank you. Uh, Vice President?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. As a high school teacher, I can tell you this is a huge issue we face on the daily. Um, probably the, one of the most confiscated things at school. Um, so I'm, I'm happy to see that you're doing this enough that, that maybe we can scare them with a civil infraction. Hopefully, they learn their lesson, and then if they continue on, we can go to the misdemeanor. So I'd be a offer, or happy to offer an approving on consent.
All right, thank you. We have, uh, anything else from counsel? Anything from the audience? All right, moving on to item fifteen is a proposed amendment to Livonia Court of Ordinances as amended. Uh, this comes to us from the Department of Law to add section forty-five of Title Nine, Chapter four, obstructing officers and city businesses in order to give additional protection to a person that is making an emergency call and to criminalize the act of interfering without, with emergency services.
Thank you. Um, this will be a brand-new ordinance. We don't currently have anything on the books that would directly impact this. Um, and this was brought to my attention by a detective, um, that of course, there's a Michigan law, that, um, a state law that prohibits this behavior, but not a Livonia ordinance. When there's not an ordinance, we can't handle it in-house. It won't necessarily be at Sixteenth District Court. It'll be a county case. Um, because this is an issue that you do see with other cases, but primarily domestic cases, that the defendant, the abuser, is stopping someone from calling nine-one-one and using emergency services. That's why it is important to have this ordinance, and we're able to prosecute this and prosecute it in-house and at Sixteenth District Court.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. The floor is yours.
Approving.
Consent?
Yep.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Rogers, you're saying if I was gonna stop Councilman McCullough from calling the cops on me, I would be in this violation?
Yes.
Yes, you would.
Okay.
You can't do it.
I guess not.
And it goes the same way for you, you know? No, um, so we have an approving on consent. Any other questions or concerns from, uh, counsel? Anything from the audience? I want to take a minute and commend you for process improvement, because it's funny when you start looking at some of these things, you have a fresh look, and so changing the process, keep it going. Honestly, these are great. And then please, on behalf of all counsel, just give Judge Jolly the hard time, please, on behalf of counsel.
I appreciate your kind words, and will do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. To the final item, sixteen, request for consideration of a proposed ordinance. This comes to us, uh, from Freya Jacoby, Freya Jacoby. I got it, right?
Freya.
Freya.
Long A, kinda.
You know, I'm, I'm the worst, but that's fine.
That's all right.
Freya. In order to regulate the number of racing pigeons allowed to be housed in an N-two neighborhood or district.
Yeah, I never thought I'd have to handle a such topic. Well, the state of Michigan allows racing pigeons. Um, I, I believe some of the racing pigeon people refer to it as a sport. I refer to it as an activity.
So, can you explain what a, what a racing, racing pigeon, like?
It's a carrier pigeon, but they race them, and it's very inhumane. PETA has been trying to get it outlawed for years, and there's a lot of money involved with illegal gambling, hundreds of thousands of dollars. But it's considered a hobby, and people in Michigan are allowed to do it, even in, in two-zoned areas that I live in. But I would like, Michigan's law allows cities, towns, local municipalities to regulate the practice. And the permit that you have to get from the county, Wayne County Health Department, in order to build a pigeon loft and own pigeons, has a set of rules that have to be abided by. And one of the rules is that the owner shall not house, keep, or harbor more pigeons than permitted. So I would like a number set with an ordinance, preferably twenty or less, because I could tolerate that. Um, my neighbor who has built a pigeon loft, not a coop, it's fourteen feet by twenty-one, that could house a small family. Um, he told me personally that he's, plans on starting with eighty pigeons.
Oh, my goodness.
So I would like to put a limit on that before he moves them in. And that could be any day now, because I think the loft is pretty much done.
Yeah. That's crazy. Let me, um, Councilman Toye, you, you want the floor?
Yeah, real quick, um, ma'am, I'm sorry, um, we're, what part of Livonia are you in?
I am right off Eight Mile, first block into Livonia between Farmington and Merriman.
Wow, okay. So that, I'm trying to remember if that's a little rule in there, is it not?
No, it's, it's zoned N-two, a neighborhood two.
Was it? Okay.
It's not a rural farming.
It's not a rule at all? Okay, so it's.
But the state law doesn't care about that.
Yeah, I hear ya, state law, yeah.
You're allowed to have them. I know a woman who has a neighbor in Allen Park, and Allen Park has yet to put an ordinance in place, and her neighbor now has two hundred pigeons. She can't even go out in her backyard.
Are they noisy?
They're messy.
Messy.
They smell, they carry disease and parasites.
Okay.
They have to be inoculated constantly, and if it's not maintained, the waste will attract rodents and
Sure, oh, sure.
insects and everything else.
Wow.
And I'm just trying to preserve the value of my property.
Well, thank you for coming forward. Um, I'm not quite sure what to do with this, um, Mr. Chair.
I have, uh, Councilwoman Schill.
Oh, Councilwoman Schill, well, no.
Yes.
Not that I'll know.
Listen, we heard that you.
So, can you tell me the size of this building again, you said?
Fourteen foot by twenty-one foot, feet.
So it's a, it's a building?
Yeah, he put it up on stilts, because he was trying to get away from having to put a rat wall in. But the ordinance or the inspection, um, person that came out said, you still have to put a rat wall in. So it's up on stilts, fourteen by twenty-one.
So he applied for a building permit?
He, yeah, he had to get a permit from the county in order to have pigeons and build a facility for them.
Did he apply for a building permit?
And then he had to go, once he got the county permit saying he's allowed to do it, then he had to go to Livonia Building Department and get a building permit, and they gave him one.
They did give him one.
Nobody asked him how many pigeons he was planning on.
Okay.
You know? They didn't think that far ahead.
There probably wasn't a description for racing pigeons on the building.
I would like to know, and I don't know who could give me this information. I've asked a couple of people. I would like to know if there are any other pigeon racing people in Livonia?
I.
Or is this the first one?
That's why I wanted to ask you a definition. I got, let me go to Councilman Donovan.
Mr. President, I'd like to report a recommendation from the Law Administration on, uh, on this matter and what the Law Department's perspective on this is. Thank you.
So what that means basically is we're asking our incredible law staff, who'll get it voted on, um, because right now, well, you want that on consent? Is that fine with the colleagues?
There's no objection, my colleagues.
Yes.
Can we still put forth a motion for the next meeting, and hopefully we'll get that report and recommendation from law prior to the next meeting or at the next meeting, so we're ready to move on something?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could, we could do that.
I, I've sent the Law Department everything I've researched weeks ago. I, I sent it to Mr. Fisher.
What's going on?
Mr. Fisher and Mr. Fisher, both of them.
All right, so what we'll do is, um, right now, we'll leave it, um.
I'd like to put forth a resolution on, on the regular. We'll put on the regular for the next meeting to, to put a limit, a number limit of how many pigeons are allowed.
Okay.
So if I, I'll put forth twenty, what she put forth, and if law recommends something different, then we'll amend the resolution.
I, I would also like to add a little addendum onto that and, um, include anyone who already owns pigeons to have to comply, because if he moves these pigeons in before this happens,
We'll have to look at, I'll, we'll ask law, so law, obviously, there's different things, but right now, what this means is we have a motion, we have a specific motion limiting for twenty, basically, to keep it on the regular, so we can discuss it.
Yeah.
And at that time, hopefully, maybe law could have some extra information. So regardless, uh, you're gonna want to come back on the seventh, I believe, right?
July seventh.
July seventh.
Okay.
So that's gonna be the regular meeting. It starts at seven. It will be on the agenda.
Yeah.
And at that point, And at that point, maybe we might have something from law, but we also do have a motion right now just to hold it on the regular.
Okay.
So make sure you be here 7 o'clock on the 7th.
All right.
All right? We'll give the Fishers a little bit more time to look at this.
Yeah, I was here two months ago at the meeting.
Yes, I do remember.
And I dealt with, when I called Sarah back, Legal was waiting to hear from council, and council was waiting to hear from Legal, and nothing was being done.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you coming out and hanging out with us tonight, and yeah, we'll discuss racing pigeons, we'll have some more information.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, that concludes our study in me, our study agenda. I'm going to go back to the audience for items that are not on the agenda, once, twice, gone. Council?
Motion to adjourn.
I think we can safely show everybody in this audience. Good night, Livonia.